How'd you know that was me?
Trying to throw your voice?
Throw my voice.
So we'll call the meeting, joint meeting of Personnel and Budget and Finance to order. And without objection, I think we'll take all three of the items on today's agenda together. And we have a quorum of personnel, and we have the Chair of Budget and Finance present for the record. That's myself, Paul Coretts, and Councilmember Zein on Personnel, and Mr. Parks and I on Budget.
Can Mr. Parks be part of Personnel, too?
Yes, you are.
Oh, okay. I just wanted...
Inadvertent, but yes. So we have the full complement of our Personnel Committee members. Maggie, I wonder if you could start by walking us through Personnel report on the Labonge motion?
Thank you, Councilman Coretts. Maggie Wayland, General Manager, Personnel Department. In the adopted budget instructions from fiscal year 09-10, the Personnel Department was directed to develop a strategy and plan of action for the consolidation of HR functions. The adopted budget instructions for fiscal year 10-11 further instructed the Personnel Department to reorganize the city's HR function in a manner that improves responsiveness and effectiveness and generates cost savings. In February of 2011, there was a council motion by Councilmember Labonge and Hahn instructing the Personnel Department to report on opportunities for consolidating the city's HR function. Toward that goal, the Personnel Department contracted with the Equitera firm, which has recently been purchased by KPMG, to provide an overview and a series of recommendations as it relates to the potential for consolidating HR functions. The contractor's key findings found that centralization would balance HR staff, skill levels, and service levels across the city, reduce duplication of effort and costs, decrease error rates, reduce liability, implement best practices across the city, develop HR staff in a comprehensive way, and enhance their career growth, optimize HR processes, and increase use of data to drive decision-making and to measure efficiency. Other agencies that have centralized their HR functions are the City of New York, City of San Diego, City of Phoenix, Los Angeles County, State of California is currently in the process of looking at their HR functions, State of Michigan, the State of Pennsylvania, and the State of Utah. There are also a number of other agencies that are looking at the prospect of centralizing. Most HR functions that are handled in the departments, at some point in time, interact with Central Personnel Agency. So what is happening in the operating department is something that is consistent with the duties that are performed in the Personnel Department. We have employee selection, personnel records, discipline while it takes place in the department, it ends up at the Civil Service Commission. Safety is something that the Personnel Department is responsible for, however, there are safety personnel that are located in operating departments. We also maintain the contracts for workplace violence, and the Employee Assistance Program, so that when incidents occur within departments, the Personnel Department is involved. We also chair the Threat Management Team, where we work with the City Attorney's Office, the Police Department, as well as the Operating Department. HR staffing has already been reduced. Due to the yearly retirement incentive program, there were 17 HR positions that were cut from the budget. Over the last three years, Personnel Department staff has been reduced by 24%, and the Operating Department staff has been reduced by 28%. So there's no doubt that there is a need to bolster up the services that are provided on both ends. Staffing ratios range anywhere throughout the departments that we have been looking at, the Phase One departments, anywhere from one HR person to 86 employees, to one HR person for every 383. So there is a disparity, not to mention the fact that we, of these departments, many of them, or at least the departments with no staff, have zero HR people to handle the HR problems that come their way. The Phase One departments are Animal Services, Cultural Affairs, El Pueblo, Emergency Management. We had also recommended the Employee Relations Board, which has three employees. The Employee Relations Board has requested that they not be included in this because they feel that it somehow puts their objectivity and neutrality in jeopardy, given the fact that the Personnel Department comes before the board. General Services, Information Technology Agency, the Personnel Department, Public Works, that would be the Board of Public Works, Recreation and Parks, and Transportation. The departments that do not have staff are Cultural Affairs, El Pueblo, and Emergency Management. The proposal requests that 40 professional staff members and 22 clerical employees be transferred, for a total of 62 employees. At that point, the staffing ratio after centralization would be 1 to 153 employees. The recommended range for governmental agencies is 1 to 125, but this would not be excessive, and it certainly would balance out the HR services to all of the employees. In order to accomplish this, the Personnel Department and the Operating Departments, along with the Mayor's Office, embarked on creating shared service agreements. These were agreements between the Personnel Department and the Operating Departments, and it is to provide HR services. Within these agreements, there was strict adherence to the charter that grants the authority for general managers to act as the appointing authority for each of their department, and in no way affected the authority of general managers. It customized services based on the department's needs, and it specified responsibilities and The initial savings to the city is $430,000. That is the equivalent of the elimination of eight clerical employees. The potential savings could be $2 million for up to three years. Frankly, I think I'm underestimating the number, but I just want to make sure that everybody understands that there are savings that will be connected with this. The initial HR structure that's being proposed is that we would have centralized units. Those centralized units would deal with Form 41 transactions, Safety Division, equal employment opportunity, and training, where we would consolidate the Operating Department staffs that currently perform those duties, and we would bring them into the Personnel Department, and they would supplement what we currently have. We would also create four service centers, and this is where the liaison activities for the departments would be delivered. And this is where the liaison activities for the departments would be delivered. And the service centers would be managed by Personnel Directors. So, in other words, we would try to keep as intact, as much as possible, what the departments are currently experiencing. Because, you know, what we're trying to do is we're trying to accomplish this, we're trying to make sure the services are provided, but we are also cognizant of the fact that we are limited as it relates to budget, and the idea of spending dollars, moving people around, would not be in the best interest of the city at this point in time. Ultimately, that's where we would like to go. But for the time being, we believe that this will allow the departments to continue to experience the comfort of having their HR staff onsite and to maintain the current configuration of staffing as much as possible. We were recommending that the proposed service locations be the Personnel Building, which is located on Temple and Vignus, and we would have satellite offices in City Hall, City Hall South, and Fig Plaza. Phase 2 of the plan includes approximately 16 more departments, which could be as much as 80 more HR staff. During Phase 1, we would be identifying and implementing efficiencies and establishing citywide best practices. What we would be doing during 2011 and 2012 is we would be reviewing best practices, we would be identifying and eliminating redundancies, we would be training HR staff, we would be collecting and reviewing metrics from each service center, and we would hopefully be converting to a paperless Personnel Records system, including Form 41 documents, which is the backbone of not only the payroll system, but the Personnel System. The long-term advantages are consistent delivery of HR services, a more robust risk management, improved HR staff allocation, organizational development, performance management, and strategic workforce planning. I am available to answer any questions you may have.
Before we ask questions on this, why don't you also walk us through the Mayor's Proposal, if there are any significant differences?
Well, I think that the Mayor's Proposal, I think, really had more to do with the vehicle to get to this point. The Mayor's Proposal, it was not included in the budget. It was decided that this would be a more expeditious way to accomplish transferring the functions of the 10 departments, well, actually nine departments excluding the Personnel Department. And, but as far as the information I just went through, that's always been a part of the plan.
Okay, and why don't I ask the CAO also to walk us through the White Paper, and then, once it's all out there, then we can start asking questions.
The White Paper itself is consistent with what was presented by the Director of Personnel. Essentially, it lays out the concept and really introduces some of the main reasons why we should do this. I think in particular, as was stated, you know, you've heard me say more than once that while we've made significant progress in addressing our structural shortfall, we're going to continue to face a number of difficult years in the future. And so, in a context where we've lost such a significant number of our workforce, over 4,000 positions, many of the most experienced individuals through the early retirement program, and we're not in a situation to hire them back or hire their replacements. One of the ways of mitigating the impact to the organization and the huge brain drain is by looking at these kinds of consolidations, HR consolidation being one of the strongest concepts. In this particular, the reasoning behind that is that it allows for an expertise to be developed and formed in a very quick period of time. If you are currently responsible for the HR function in your department, the core mission of that department may be to provide recreational services or other services not related to HR, and you're not in a situation to be in a cohort of individuals who can share with you and help understand and develop and provide recommendations of how to proceed on HR-related cases and situations. This consolidation allows for expertise to be developed and strengthened within the city. In turn, what that will look like is greater continuity in the kinds of HR direction that is provided to departments, so that there's greater consistency throughout the city, so that how a situation is managed, how your agreements is handled, how an EEOC complaint is managed, that that's not dependent on where you filed it, if it's filed in one department versus another. It should provide for greater consistency across the board. And in turn, what we hopefully will start seeing, will start seeing a drop in the kinds of cases that are filed against the city, particularly around those cases. The other main reason we are in support, and we issued in our White Paper, is an opportunity to ensure that we eliminate redundancies that may occur. The HR function should be consistent throughout the city, and in some cases, may not be. The same group of people may be engaged in the same kind of activity. Should it be consolidated under one department, it would allow for those redundancies to be eliminated. And I think the important point that was stated was the way it's envisioned and laid out by the Personnel Department is to still provide each general manager the ability to count on a professional HR individual or group of individuals that will be available to provide them the direction and the advice when they're needed. This is not, I think, one of the concerns that we've heard from some of our colleagues is that if we lose the HR individuals in our particular department, we won't have anybody to turn to whenever there's a particular case that comes up or a situation that requires HR advice. What I would argue is that this, in fact, will enhance that capacity, and that advice that you get will be consistent with the practices that should be consistent throughout the city. And ultimately, of course, there is a financial benefit. I would say that of all the reasons to do this and move forward with this concept, saving the dollars, while important, is probably the least important. As you could tell, the dollar amount is, we're not going to solve the structural deficit over this particular proposal, and that's not really the intent here. The intent here is to basically be honest about the impact of the reduction of the workforce, what that has done to this function throughout the city. Instead of just pretending that everyone's still maintaining that, is figuring out how can we actually mitigate that and actually turn it into an opportunity to strengthen that function across the board. So overall, we issued it in our mid-year report as a White Paper for the city's consideration, and strongly support the proposal that's been laid out.
Thank you. And we have one member of the public also who, I'll call on now, Julie Butcher from SEIU 721.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. This makes a whole bunch of sense. It makes sense for workers, it makes sense for managers, and more importantly, it makes sense for the public. Clearly, many of these departments need, if I were to say that they need help in this area, it would be very kind. It makes total sense to move this together for fairness, for consistency, for efficiency. And in fact, we would support the implementation of the recommendations out of the Cornell Report issued in 2006, commissioned by the mayor on this area, which recommends the full and complete consolidation of all labor relations opportunities in the entire city. The fact that the Personnel Department creates a class, the wage for that class gets bargained in another office and another operation is simply unexplainable. It should all be in one place, it should all be consolidated, to save maximum money and to maximize efficiency and benefits to public. Thank you.
Thank you. Couple of questions, and then I'll pass it on to my colleagues. I know the Personnel Department holds monthly meetings with Personnel Directors Association and City Department Personnel Officers and such, and this has been the topic of, I understand, at least several discussions. What are people's concerns? What are you hearing on the more negative side? What are the concerns about elements of this that could be problematic? And general managers as well, are you hearing concerns from them? And I don't know that everyone will make their concerns public, but they still may have them. What's your sense of the downside of this that people see?
Well, first of all, the Personnel Directors Association is an association. It's not an arm of the Personnel Department. So, they meet on a monthly basis, and occasionally, I can swing an invitation and speak to them, and I have spoken to them, but for the most part, it is reserved for Personnel Directors.
But you have a sense of where those conversations are going?
As a result of this initiative, we have met with general managers. I have met with Personnel Directors. We meet every other Friday with the impacted Personnel Directors to discuss how we would go about achieving this and what the impacts could be. I think that, you know, for the most part, probably the biggest negative is the fact that coming to the Personnel Department, I think that they lose a certain amount of their independence, or at least their sense of their independence. Because a Personnel Director in an operating department is really the top of the HR chain. And many of them report directly to the General Manager or an Assistant General Manager. So I think that just from that standpoint, they feel as though they're losing a certain amount of prestige and possibly even a certain amount of control. I think there's always the suspicion of the Central Personnel Agency, any kind of central agency, that people believe that their authority is going to be usurped and that they believe they've got a pretty good Personnel function and they would just as soon continue to operate it as it's currently being operated. And I understand that. I was a Personnel Director for an operating department, and I know that people get very proprietary, and you've got your own show to run, and there are a lot of benefits to that. However, one of the reasons for this proposal is we do have a lot of highly qualified people in operating departments, and the ability to share that expertise with departments that don't have HR staffs or maybe don't have enough HR staff, I think is very, very beneficial to the city. We are one employer, we're not 42 employers. We are the city of Los Angeles. And when we do something wrong, it's the city of Los Angeles that ends up getting sued and ends up paying for it. So again, taking this expertise and putting them under one roof makes perfect sense to me. I understand the personal issues, but I honestly can tell you that I see that this is the best thing that could happen to Human Resources for the future of the city of Los Angeles.
Now, the departments that seem to have the biggest problems that you've just mentioned seem to be Fire and Police. How come they weren't included in the first batch?
Well, the Police Department has much of what we consider to be, and the same with Fire, much of what we consider to be a part of the HR function. They have sworn officers who are performing those duties. So it's not a good match. They do have civilian staff, but the civilian staff, for the most part, are not doing discipline. They're not doing labor relations, they're doing other HR activities.
So would you ever envision them working together if we continue to move towards consolidation? Would those two departments ever be part of it?
Well, I think that there are certain aspects of both departments that could be assumed in this plan, but I still think that probably Police and Fire, given the fact that they're peace officers, and there are a number of rules and laws that apply to peace officers that may not translate well into a civilian environment.
And I know not having standardized policies has been a problem for, I'm sure, a time immemorial. How have you dealt with that up until now? How do those issues get dealt with?
Well, whenever we observe a problem, we try to point that out to either the HR staff or the Personnel Directors. But there's a lot of activity that takes place in the departments, and unless it's something that's really egregious, there are a number of activities we have no awareness of, until it becomes a serious issue. We have a very complicated city charter. We have civil service rules that are pretty restrictive. However, there's still the ability to violate the charter and the rules without it being evident until somebody files a lawsuit.
And I see several department heads here. I don't know if any of you would like to give us any feedback on your thoughts on this. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but if anyone wants to offer their thoughts, I would gratefully accept them.
I think I'll move back so that nobody feels that...
Good afternoon. Cynthia Reese, President of the Board of Public Works. And you've already heard the comments about efficiency and consistency. And I know this is a big change, and change is never easy. And I have to say, I support this, and I'm going to be completely honest, not everybody in my department supports it, the Bureau Directors don't. It's what I've heard, they haven't told me directly, but I'm hearing through the rumor mill. But I do really think it's good for efficiency and consistency. And even with my own department, I think it's very important, small things like background checks. Now, why are background checks so important? Because we know, once you're a city employee, it makes it very difficult to, you know, get them out of the system if they're bad employees. Well, I've actually had practical experience where in my own department, there've been cases where the bureaus want to move, when we did hiring in the past, brought employees in, felt the background check wasn't quite that important. And so we actually had two cases, one that comes to mind, where they went ahead and hired the employee and said, "Well, we'll worry about the background check later." And when it came in, one day before the probation was up, we found out that they had a felony. And my Bureau Director was like, "Well, that's a great employee, and, you know, we want to keep him." So, you know, sometimes as an operational department, when you do have the opportunity to hire, you get really anxious and want to hire the person, and then forget about some of the formalities. But to me, some things like background checks are very important. Or if it was centralized in one spot, I think that all that would be vetted out before the employee actually even started. So I know that this is a change for everybody, but I'm supportive, and my recommendation is that we move forward on the matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Randy Levin, General Manager of ITA. Just a couple of comments. I support the consolidation. This is certainly something that, you know, we've watched and followed, and certainly something that actually we would like to pursue in some way, shape, or form for IT also. I do want to say that I believe that the Personnel Department has heard, you know, a number of our issues and met with us and incorporated a lot of our feedback into their service level agreement. We are happy with our own HR department, I just want to put that on the record. They're good people, they do what we ask them to do and more. They're a strategic part of our team, and I can't say enough good things about them. But that being said, you know, we're very supportive of this consolidation effort. We've talked a lot about it, and the only concern that the department is really talking about right now... about right now is really related to access, meaning that if people are co-located in certain areas, how accessible are they going to be when issues come up? And sometimes they need to be-- they come up right away and need to be dealt with. And so, I think that's just an area of something that we're going to have to work through if, you know, HR personnel is not readily available, you know? I mean, they sit with us right now. So, that's the only issue that we can foresee, and we're just amenable to work through whatever the issues are.
Thank you. Brenda, you want to--
Hi. Brenda Barnett, Animal Services. I totally support the consolidation. We've actually been a little bit of a pilot program, I think. We had some challenges going on within our department, and although we have what I consider a very strong HR team, it's a small team, and we're, you know, we're a small department, but we're spread out over the city. So, you know, we have a backlog in cases and some things that, you know, people have vacation, they have sick time. It just really doesn't work as effectively as I think it should. So, we ended up with some issues that I felt were serious, and I reached out to the bigger city and asked for help, which I got through Maggie Whelan and Personnel Department. And what we've-- what I've seen as a result of this is we have access to a number of experts on personnel issues. They can talk among themselves. They can come up with a plan of action, and if one person is busy, another investigator can work on something. And I just think for the overall good, it's very effective, very efficient, and we've certainly been pleased with the opportunity and the help we've gotten in this experience.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. I'm Yur Sidadi, and I'm General Manager, LADOT. I also am here to talk in support of this program, LADOT, as well as the larger departments. And we, as Randy said, had a full staffing level within our HR that's done a good job. But I think, as said by speakers earlier, we are one city. And I also want to thank Maggie and Phyllis and their staff in really listening to what are some of our unique positions and 24/7 operations and other aspects, and they were very cooperative in putting those challenges and changes into our shared service agreement. And I think as we look at that and within our DOT personnel, we use a lot of technology, and we've used some of the paperless, going paperless on some of our programs. So, I think it will be helpful as they look at it to, you know, be in line with, I think, some of the creative things we've done, and I'm in support of this program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Saul Romo for the Department of Cultural Affairs. We are obviously one of the beneficiaries of this consolidation. As we do not have an HR staff or dedicated employees to deal specifically with any HR issues, this is a great service that will be provided for the department, and it'll allow us to get access into some HR functions which currently aren't being practiced in our department. And I think you could use this as a representative model for small departments in that, you know, we don't deal extensively with many grievances, disciplinary issues, or other HR issues, but it only takes one involved case in any of those fields to make us highly dependent on the Personnel Department and start making phone calls to them and really become dependent on their expertise. So, you'll-- we support this, and we find that this will be very beneficial for us.
Thanks.
Regina Adams, Executive Officer for Recreation and Parks. I know that the Personnel Department had started meeting with some of the Personnel Directors from the departments, I guess maybe late last calendar year. And management, we've started to have our input when their Equitera Consultant Report was released in February, when we were then called to a meeting. And when I say "we," I mean now the either General Managers or myself, for my General Manager, John Muckreen, when we were called to meeting to provide our input. At that time, we thought that we were going to be able to provide input because we had some concerns about the consultant report. There were many holes in the report, and there were a lot of details that when-- and I asked various questions about how this was supposed to work. Our concerns of this, first of all, you know, for our staff, we have thousands of employees. Majority of them are part-time employees, but we also have HR staff that we are very happy with. Even for a department our size, our staff works very hard and they handle many issues. And one of the concerns that I brought up in the various meetings that we've had with the Personnel Department and the Mayor's Office and with the CAO, we have brought concerns to their attention because there are many things, and although I understand Maggie Whelan as the General Manager of the Personnel Department, and yes, she in the past also worked in the Recreation and Parks Department, there are many things that have changed since the time that she was there. Now, of course, I'm not an HR expert. She is. However, one of the things I brought to her attention was an example, that we recently had a case, a personnel case, that our HR staff and myself worked with the City Attorney's Office on, and the case took almost three years. And for the time that we were working on that case, the Personnel Department was not involved in any way, shape, or form. And that's one of the things I brought to them. The big thing that I brought to their attention was that what was missing in the consultant report was that there has to be advocacy for the department. Right now, there are situations whereby even when we have our staff go before the Civil Service Commission, that we may not be on the same page with the General Manager of the Personnel Department. And so, we have our HR staff as the advocate for our General Manager as to what we would like to-- how we would like to have a case presented from our side. And we brought-- I brought that to their attention, that advocacy is a very important part of this consolidation. I understand for the consolidation and from other departments that you've heard from, that they support this because, of course, they may have issues with their current HR staff and so forth. That is not the situation for Recreation and Parks. We are, of course, going to have to also bring this before our Board to present it to them as well. But our concerns are advocacy, and we also are concerned about, right now, we have our staff, which is 100% dedicated to Recreation and Parks. In this consolidation, that will no longer be the case, because they will be involved in, I don't know if it's still called pods or what it is, but they will be involved in units. And for example, our HR Director right now and his staff is 100% dedicated just to our department, but in this consolidation, he, if he's still the one that we will work with, will not only be responsible for Recreation and Parks, but he'll also have other departments that he may be responsible for. And also too, he won't have the same amount of staff that he currently has that works just for Recreation and Parks on our items. So, that's one of the things we also brought to their attention. And also too, we have lawsuits, we have various issues and so forth. Like I stated, that our staff carries our sphere, say the least, for us as to how we would like to see things resolved. And so, we brought that to their attention. We're also concerned about how this is actually going to be implemented. In the Mayor's Letter, it states that he wants to be effective on July 1st, and in order for it to become effective July 1st, there are many details that need to be worked out. For example, on July 1st, the-- even if all these positions are supposed to be transferred over to the Personnel Department, how will they actually have access to-- just to even pay the employees? How will they have access to their D time and so forth? And for Recreation and Parks, we don't transfer the money over July 1st. We will have to be invoiced, because as you know, for our department, since we're semi-proprietary and becoming more and more toward becoming full proprietary, we're going to actually be able to afford less of the service than what we have here. Because what we're going to have to pay for now is for the full, direct, and indirect costs for the employees, for the services that we're going to receive in this consolidation. So, we're very concerned about that. And so, as time goes on, we're going to be able to afford less of the service. And so, that is a big concern for us. And, you know, we're trying to, I brought all these items to their attention and say, "How are the details going to be worked out?" Because that hasn't been addressed. In the report, the latest report, it states that there are supposed to be special fund savings for six part-time clerk typists. Those are the employees who are in Recreation and Parks. I don't understand how there will be savings if those employees still exist. We still will have them. The only way that you can have savings is if you're going to move them off to a special fund, or you are going to lay them off. Well, first of all, they're already special funded because they're in Recreation and Parks. They're not on the city's general fund. So, I don't understand how that counts towards savings in this proposal. We're going to be presenting these various items to our Board because they have to make a decision as to whether or not they think that this is a good proposal for us. I understand for the other departments who may be having issues and various things with their own HR staff, and those are things that they need to deal with. And I understand that some departments also may be need assistance because they've either lost their HR staff or-- and so forth. But also too, I believe that we can work with the various departments, especially the smaller departments who are maybe having issues, to try to assist them. I understand too, if there's efficiencies that can be developed whereby everyone, and also can have consistency on how HR functions are carried throughout the city, I understand that that's very-- a very good idea, and I understand that, yes, the Personnel Department should be the lead on that to determine what the best practices are for the city. What we are saying here is that, okay, if this is the way the city is going to go, that's fine, but we were very concerned, and we didn't understand how we ended up in Phase One. Why couldn't we have been placed in Phase Two? We understand if this is the way the city wants to go, and they think there's going to be efficiencies and so forth. One of the things that was also presented was that one of the efficiencies was the processing of Form 41s. Form 41s is a very, very small item for Recreation and Parks, and that's part of what they are referring to as transactional work. Transactional work for our department involves our thousands of part-time employees. That's where the transactional work happens, and that's where our employees, for our HR staff, spend a lot of their time, and we were concerned about that. We brought these issues to the Personnel Department and the Mayor's Office, and they've been working with us, and they've been developing an MOU between our departments, and right now, the draft MOU between our departments is at 12 pages long. Because we went through it, and we painstakingly laid out the details of what it is that we wanted to be able to see continue for the services that we've been receiving from our HR staff.
Well, thank you for your input. Appreciate it. Colleagues, any questions? Mr. Parks?
Let me comment. You know, one of the things in that I think it's obvious in the budget, the last couple of years, we've asked CAO and Maggie to look at this process. Also, the fact that we look at the litigation on Claims Board and Budget and Finance, we see the significant difference in variables on how personnel matters are handled, and sometimes, from a lack of knowledge, it creates a loss for the city. The two things I have a concern with, and one of them is that we have not, since I've been here, we've not had success in making transfers of assignments, even if they're minor, without some form of an operational plan that says to everyone, "This is how we're going to do it to answer those questions." And not necessarily looking at the operational plans, that everybody's going to buy into it at the end, but it certainly relieves the pressure of people believing they've not been heard, or at least at the minimum, they've been heard and you disagree, but we clearly know how it's going to operate. Having been in the department, one of the things that I think often gets overlooked is that it's rare that an individual only does one thing. Over time, they absorb other functions, and if you take that body, those other functions stay there, and that department that's losing them now wonders, "How am I going to get this done?" Because the body left. And so, I think those are the kinds of things that get worked out, and operational plans to say, you know, exactly what people are doing, how it's going to be done, what are the tasks that are left for that department to get done. And so, that's some clarity before it happens. I don't disagree with the plan. I just think it's-- the mandate of 45 days is artificial, and being artificial, it puts us in a bind to not have all these questions answered.
Councilmember, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yes, you did. You did that all the time. Go ahead.
Would you like to--
No, go ahead.
--finish? We have nine signed shared services agreements, and they go into incredible detail, including some of those duties that really are not HR-related, but we agreed to continue to perform those duties. The operational plan outside of what duties are going to be performed really consists of, everybody stays where they are, and that we work with the departments to establish the best practices, as well as how we're going to proceed. This is a very fluid time for the city, although I have to say, in all my years with the city, it all seems very fluid. But I think that we have to be very careful about being too ambitious. Frankly, any savings that result from this plan, I would want to use to improve technology so that we don't have to rely as much on the physical space where we're actually located. But I do understand what you're saying, and I think that-- but I do believe that we really have established the basics of what this plan is going to consist of.
But again, I think the point I'm trying to make is that you, as a professional General Manager and working with the departments, you have a game plan. Fact is that the policymakers sitting at this table have never seen it, nor do we understand it, nor do we have the ability to even discuss it intelligently, that when people come to us and say, "I've never been talked to about that," we have no response to that. So, I think the best way I've seen us do these is to come with the operational plan, then everybody gets to know and agree or disagree, or pieces of it, or ask the questions that they need to ask, and then generally, it's as smooth as you can get it. We're still going to deal with it.
I understand.
Now, the other problem I have with it is that, for the CAO, is that as these bodies move, I know that in departments where they've been cut, they then internally make adjustments to cause their personnel function to move forward. If we put them all in Maggie's department and we keep cutting, pretty soon, can Maggie fulfill those responsibilities? If those cuts, all of a sudden, she's going to be looking like she is wealthy at personnel because she's added, what, 50, 60 people?
62.
62 people. And all of a sudden, budget goes bad. Does her 62 become 54? Next year, does it come 45? Can she fulfill that? Because nothing is off the table when we come to budget cuts, and so, that's the clear issue. We can't put a tag on them and say, "Maggie gets cut for everything except personnel." And that's the two pieces that I think we have to resolve. If you're going to take those functions and it requires 62 people, you might have some efficiencies, being that you are zeroing in on the strategy and the functions, but not so significant that you're going to cut them in half or reduce them to that point. So, those are the two issues that I think have to get resolved, that, you know, if you're going to assume them, you all of a sudden will look like you have a lot of positions in your department that you can contribute to the general fund, and those are the kinds of decisions. And then, you will make a decision as to how those activities will continue to be serviced, and you're going to probably go across the board and move things around, and so, that function will get shorted at some point. And so, those are the two things I think we have to work out, because I can just see that, from my perspective, the budget is not going to immediately get better next year or the year after. And if we come to you and say, "Maggie, there's, you know, you've got to cut X number of dollars, or your cap rate is this," or whatever we call it, that's going to be the real challenge because even the believers that are here today, when they get the phone call or they call you and you say, "I just don't have the people to solve that for you," that's when the thing deteriorates. So, that's the-- I think that's the crux for me, of looking at the budgetary problems and the operational plans that explain to everybody that everybody has at least a level ground to understand what we're talking about.
Of course, those positions are vulnerable for reduction, even if they stay in their own respective departments. And I mean, so--
But let me just say that they're vulnerable in their current departments, but General Managers being bright people, move people around to where they think, you know, they may lose a body, but they're not going to not deploy where they absolutely is essential. So, they're going to find a way to handle their personnel needs, where Maggie's got it, and that's all they do is personnel. So, the cut is deeper and more permanent. She has no adjustment, as they do.
And we could certainly work with the Personnel Office to respond and be more specific on the operational plans. We'll do that. But I think what the argument that we're making is that what you're saying is what happened is in fact what is happening, is that because we've reduced the department so much that one of the things that are being strained is in fact this function. We saw the same thing with Accounting, and that's why we recommended creating sort of this division within the Controller's Office to allow departments to borrow or purchase temporary accounting support because of that. And so, but I certainly understand that within the context of understanding how this would operate under continued financial constraints, and to address some of the specific questions that have been raised, particularly from the Parks Department, we should come back and report on some of the particulars of that.
See, I don't disagree with the concept. I just disagree with the process. I just think when you make something this major, I've never seen it happen overnight. It takes time. People have to adjust, and otherwise, you just get, you know, whipped in the wind.
Mr. Sidadi?
Well, add 62 staff. How many do you have now, Maggie?
400.
Uh, 400.
100 and what?
What is it?
406.
406?
406.
So 106 plus 62?
No, 406.
You're 406?
Mm-hmm.
You've got 406?
I have over 100 people working on workers' comp.
Well, I'm talking about this, the issue that we're going to consolidate.
Oh, Personnel Services.
I'm not talking about your whole department.
Oh, I'm sorry. Six.
All right. See, that's more like it.
Yes.
I said 406 working.
Lots of trouble in the Personnel Department.
I know. You create most of it for us. So, I'm not, I'm not joking. I'm joking about that one. I totally support this. I think it's a long overdue. But a couple of questions I have. On your service locations, you have them all downtown.
Right.
Nothing in the Valley, nothing on the West Side, nothing in the South. Why would you have duplicate locations in one central area where they can basically walk in distance?
Well, because they're not serving the public. They're serving the department. So, keeping them downtown with their management seems the sensible thing to do.
But if you have them all downtown, why can't they be housed together? First, you've got a ton of people in the Valley, a ton of people on the West Side, in different departments, whether it be the police, or building safety, or sanitation. I mean, they got satellites all over. And you concentrate everything basically in the central city area.
But we're trying to get some synergy. We're trying to put as many people together. What I would like to see ultimately is, everybody would be located in one place. For example, the Personnel Department is located in one building.
Right.
And so, just based on the fact that we gain, we have synergy, we have the ability to walk across the hall and talk to somebody who helps us to complete an assignment, having people scattered, I don't think would be in the best interest of, of the service that's going to be provided to the departments.
Okay. But you didn't mention Caltrans and part of the satellites. Is Caltrans one of the locations?
We're still, we're discussing that.
Because you've got City Hall South, City Hall East, City Hall West, Personnel, I mean, you've got all these places. And they can't be, if you want to do consolidation in one area, there's not sufficient space to put them on the 62 in one particular location?
Not at this point in time. Because it's not just the staff. It's the, it's the personnel records that the staffs are required for maintaining. A good example is what Regina was saying with Recreation and Parks. They have 1,600, I think, full-time, but they have close to 6,000 part-time.
Right.
Every one of those employees generates a personnel record that has to be maintained by that department. So, until we get a documented imaging system, and until we get a paperless Form 41 process, they have to maintain those files. So it's not just the staff. It's the staff and the files.
And I know that the hospital industry is going to paperless system. I think Kaiser's totally paperless on their process. Is there any grant or funding from the state or the federal government to implement that type of system, a paperless system? Do we have to do it on our own?
Uh, I am not aware of a grant. And I think most organizations, when they've gone paperless, they've had to, to-
Internally?
-pay for the system. But it definitely is, it's very, very high on our list. And we're hoping that the Pacer system will be able to accommodate that.
Okay. And we mentioned the police and the Fire Department. When I look at liability cases, they generate a tremendous amount in the Police Department. And it seems to be the same kind of situation over and over and over. How will this rectify that particular situation? Eventually, if it does come to Personnel Department that handles the Police Department?
Well, I think that, within the Personnel Department, we have trained investigators who are experts in the area of EEO law, Equal Employment Opportunity Law, and state law. And I think that when you have that expertise, and this is something you do every single day, when you have an investigation, those are the kinds of things that you look for. I think that when you have people who come into a job and they stay for one to two years, they're not going to develop, to develop that expertise. And consequently, as they're conducting their investigation, they may not recognize that there are issues of retaliation or discrimination, and they just continue to move forward. And then, that's where the liability lies.
And we've lost a tremendous amount of late in those cases that have come forward.
Yes.
When it goes to court. There's no settlement, goes to court, we lose, we lose, we lose, we lose. There's been an avalanche of those.
I could add, Mr. Zine, you know, the county went through a similar process. And in particular, when it comes to EEOC-related complaints in the Police and the Sheriff's Department, there was a, there was a serious concern about the rise in cases and the fact that the investigations weren't necessarily handled from the best practices related to a personnel function. They may have been the best practices in terms of how to handle a crime. But because they were done by officers, the standards are different, the processes are different, and so, they result in huge cases. And so, one of the things that was done was, at first, which I think what Maggie's recommending, is establish county-wide standards, which in this case would-
Citywide?
No, well, back there it was county. But here, we would do that for the city, so that there would be consistency across the board in terms of the kinds of standards, the timeframe it would take to do a case, how they would be handled, how quickly they would be turned around, how to respond to it. And then eventually, it was established that those standards could be applied by civilians. And the, and the function was handed over to a civilian function that resulted in a drop of actual litigation in, over a period of time. So there, I think your argument, or the point that you're making, both you and Mr. Kretz, about looking at sworn departments as a potential in the future, I think it's something that we should consider here, at least what my experience has been down the street, that it's something that actually has worked.
And you'll probably find resistance in those two departments.
There was, there was absolute resistance. And, and there's, there's a, there's a number of different reasons why people say, well, civilians can investigate these kind of cases. But it, you know, you work through them. And I think the first step is, as Maggie indicated, is to establish city-wide standards. And, you know, maybe focusing first at civilians within those two departments, and then, and then broadening. And I think, I think, as Mr. Parks stated, you know, this is, this, these kinds of transitions don't happen overnight. In particular, when you have two departments that have a long history of way of doing a particular kind of work, this will allow for that kind of potential to really reduce the overall litigation cost. I have in front of me some of the costs that we've done over the last three years. And like you indicated, the majority of them are from LAPD and the Fire Department related to retaliation, back pay owed, sexual harassment, employment discrimination.
Yeah, but let's say, yeah, let's say, yeah, let's say.
Yeah.
I'm wondering, even, even before, and even if they never become part of this process, can we not still standardize some of the process of the departments that haven't been consolidated? There still have to be some best practices that could be implemented across the board. And, and even beyond the first nine or whatever departments that, that we start with, on the full consolidation. Again, there's no reason why certain best practices couldn't be implemented beyond just those nine.
We, we have conducted training and have worked closely, actually, with the New Professional Standards Bureau for the Fire Department. And they've been pretty receptive overall to hearing from us. I don't know, with LAPD, have we?
Well, it's interesting. On some of the cases, both sides have sued, both sides have won. The ones that retaliated, the ones that retaliated, both sides went to court, and both sides won millions of dollars. So, I mean, let's just split the pot in half and pay everyone. So it adds up, obviously, and it creates a problem in the budget when we try to provide the services. So, I've been censored that. I've seen it happen in another department, at least the Police Department's coming out and admitting, they haven't really been doing a good job in that. And I think it's a timely opportunity with this movement to try and say, make it a little wiser. They're great investigating and getting suspects, but when it comes to this type of activity, I think there's a lot to learn from them. But anyway, I totally support this merge and give you a little more work to do, Maggie.
Thank you.
Well, I, I'm going to suggest a few recommendations. The first, I think this proposal has a lot of merit, but I think we need some additional time to review it in terms of the 45 days that's running. In fact, how much time do we have left on the 45 days?
I think June 11th is the date.
I think that's a-
Actually, June 10.
Saturday, June 10.
June 10.
Pardon?
June 11 is the weekend.
Okay.
So, before, June 10th? I think that's a relatively short period of time. So, what I'm going to suggest is that we disapprove item number two and move the disapproval to the Council, with the understanding that further discussions and analysis will take place, that it's not, it's not on the merits, but simply being jammed by the Charter's requirements. I'm also going to ask that we hold Agenda Items 1 and 3 in the Joint Committee and continue it to a future joint meeting. And that we ask, as with other consolidations that the Mayor recommended in the proposed budget, that we direct the Personnel Department, with the assistance of the CAO and all city departments whose HR functions are proposed for consolidation, to develop and submit an operational plan for Phase 1 of the HR consolidations for the Council's consideration, prior to proceeding with a proposal, as, as was suggested by Mr. Parks. So if there-
The only thing I'd ask, could we put, so that it, we're not lingering on this in 2013, is maybe give them a timeline of when we'd like to see this implemented. The first quarter of this fiscal year, or some date, that we can all start working towards?
And, I don't know, what's the earliest reasonable time to come back with, with a plan? So why don't we come back to this Joint Committee with, with a plan in September? And hopefully, that will give us time to resolve any questions in any of the departments that have lingering issues.
And the reason that this approval is because of Charter Section 514(c). It's a technical issue. So we're not disapproving the concept. It's just for a technical reason that we're doing it.
No, it gives us 45 days. Most of that time is already run because we're preoccupied with the budget. And-
I want to make sure that we're not killing the project.
I think it's, it's clear. We all agree, this, this idea has, has a lot of potential. Seems like a good idea. But it's just a question of timing. So-
Mr. Chair?
Would that-
Do you have a specific date for this item to go forward to Council? The first available agenda will be Tuesday.
I guess the earliest opportunity.
So Tuesday is fine?
Yes. And I guess we'd ask that this report come to the Joint Committee, the first meeting available in September.
Thank you, Councilmembers, for your consideration. Appreciate it.
And if there are no other comments or questions, I would adjourn Personnel.